Everybody behaves.
My hair, you can see every straightest straight hair I have.
We played that game anyway. It was, it's probably, it was sitting right there. Do what?
I think I grabbed it down.
Here Scott, I didn't need it after all.
Are you liking your new website?
Yes.
I think Bobby finished her training today.
Yeah, she's already excited about getting in there.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that part of this up and running?
Yeah, it's all right, yeah, I tried it, I was like.
I think us panelists can hear each other, but we can't hear the, the town hall.
Yeah, I'm hearing you.
Yeah, I got you loud and clear Jim.
Yeah, okay. See to the panelists. Yeah, that would be a no. Now it's connecting.
Bob Jones. Francis Gay.
Here.
Jane Davis.
Here.
Steve Danny.
Here.
Chip Man.
Here.
Motion.
Second.
Second on approval of minutes from January 6th. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both. Clerk Treasurers report.
I think we have one more.
Yes.
Special session.
Okay, alright.
We have the motion. Make a motion approved January 6th. Meetings.
Have a motion second within the six minutes.
Aye.
Okay, we have the council valuable voucher. Sure you've all looked at it, the bills kept coming even though the snow didn't stop it, but it did stop us on a few other things getting it, we finally got the urea enclosed out and closed up and basically short version, this is what I have tonight.
Get questions on Lewis report.
Make a motion approved clerk treasurers report.
A motion on the second please. One second now. Have a motion in the second to approve the clerk treasurer's report, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those say. Department force.
Good evening. Really not much going on as far as the reports and quick synopsis of what we've done over the last month. A total of fifty-seven runs that we've made, sixteen of those being EMS. Twenty-one of them were in the town of Pendleton, twelve were in Falcon Township, ten were in Green Township, seven were in the town of Ingles. Three of them are in the town of Ingles which incorporates I-69 from 650 west, west to the county line. We did two mutual aid runs to Adams Township and two mutual aid runs to Union Township Chesterfield when they had a big fire at Skyview Apartments, so we sent our engine over there to stand by and then actually to go work on the, the second day that they had the fire. Just a follow-up from last month, I spoke of establishing ordinances for inspections going forward, I sent my proposal to Jeff Cram so he can review with the fee schedules and stuff, so when we, you know, get that inspections to new businesses, plans reviews and stuff like that, new businesses come in, so I can lay my eyes on it, make sure they're following state code, all the international building codes and stuff like that, so he's got that reviewing those. He's on Zoom, so I'm sure I'll get some information back before the next meeting forward as far as that goes. Other than that, it's been, we had our first three public meetings on the fire territory. Good turnout, I was glad, there was a lot of comments from the public as well as I received some email information, some questions and stuff later on. That email address is info, I-N-F-O at PendletonStation80.org. It's all on our Facebook page, social media pages and stuff like that, so if anybody has any questions, feel free to reach out. Do not post any questions on the Facebook page because they won't get answered, please email them to us off that email address and we will be more than happy to answer those questions going forward. The next meeting will be February twenty-third at 6:00 PM at the fire station, looking for another good turnout and good input as we, as we move forward with this. Other than that, that's all I have, any other questions?
Bring the comment as far as that. Chief talked about a good turnout, which there was, and you had business people there, residents there, you had people living in Markhamville, everything, a lot, lot of good questions. Say it this way, between the chief and Coco's and Steve's information. It took real big, real big. And I don't, I didn't hear any names, I'm sure there was, but not, not many, but that group done a tremendous job with the board out.
One thing I might add is I, I want to thank Coco for what she's done as far as sickness thing, I know. Because I won't, I can't keep up with. Yeah, I, yeah, exactly, so, but I appreciate what she's done to help us and get things squared away and stuff, because I know I would have missed half of what needed to be done during all that, so, we appreciate it, thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
I'm still talking, you got any question for the fire department?
I don't have a question for the fire.
Come on, go ahead.
I would also like to thank Coco for all her help, organizational skills and keeping everybody on task. It was very important that we try to hit it out of the park on our first meeting with Coco's assistance, without her assistance, I don't think we could have done it now. And so, I want to say it again, she is fabulous and I called her the queen of Pendleton the other day.
She didn't answer my call.
Yes, sir, hi.
I appreciate using the skills that I've had and be able to use, I think it's sometimes when you're closer to the fire, like I say, I say, grace, that's too much information because you're probably people that don't know as much, so kind of break it down, so appreciate you guys being patient for that part.
I'd also like to thank the fire department for all their help to set up. That was, that was a lot of effort.
Good group of people that.
Few more times.
And I can't, I can't do it without them, so I appreciate it, so, thank you very much.
Mister or captain.
I believe you all have copied the chief's report, including all the graphs that we're able to show all our activity for last month, a couple of things that went on on the chief's report, I believe. Leaders mentioned Sergeant Brown and Detective Bertram going through training in the prosecutor's office, in addition to that, myself, Ryan Baker and Matt Carpenter attended training on advanced roadside impaired driving enforcement over in County County today, of course. Easiest way to explain it, there's regular standardized depth of driving test, which geared towards catching intoxicated drivers, this is a more advanced training, geared to steering for catching people that are impaired on drugs. The other thing with that, on top of that, is I did start receiving some emails from Motorola, so hoping to start getting our equipment into the body cams hopefully next month. Any questions?
Questions for captain?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Court, judge online?
Yes, he is. Yes.
Judge, you got it done?
What do you got, judge?
He says nothing more to add.
Any questions for the court?
I'm excited to get up, just can't wait. Excited to just ask, you guys have any questions, don't really have any to add other than what's in my report. Let you know that impact fees will be in front of the planning commission next month and then on to you after that with the favorable recommendation hopefully. So, other than that, any questions?
Questions, comment, counsel. Our thing was good.
Thank you.
Blaming.
Alright, so, in the month of January, we issued forty-three permits, forty of those for new homes, compared to eight from last year. Issued forty-three permits, forty of which were new homes. Brett and Cookie and Scott Needham have been working tirelessly to get Iowa up and running and is streamlining the process now, so we have all of our permits online.
Kind of trained at that.
Yeah, so it's, it's an online permitting system, so all of our permits can now just be applied for online with platforms instead of downloading PDF either filling it out electronically or with a pen or pencil or whatever and then turning it back in, this just makes it way easier and we can track it all automatically, so we don't have to take a paper copy and put it into access, trying to track it that way. It's just an overall, much better, much more efficient system. So, that is live on our new website, which went live on the twenty-first of January, we've been working out some bugs on it, but it's very minor things, it's all ready to go. There is a text alert service being added, they're building that platform for us right now. Currently, it's sign up for e-alerts, so you know, if we have something like the urgent alert with a snowstorm or the boil water advisory or just news on any calendar events, so have counsel planning session, if you sign up for those, it'll go out back to your email system, it's be uploaded to the website for, for updated calendar. So that will have a text function shortly, I'm not sure how long it'll take to build probably with the next month. Our downtown Pendleton beside grant program, it's winter time, so nothing's really moving on that right now, I imagine it'll spring, we'll have more applicants and more movement just at, or the word needs to get supplies, they're in short, short supply right now. Our UDO is going through another round of amendments, mostly focusing on solar and wind commercial farming issues. And to those, that'll be addressed in March. And then, as far as our subdivisions, Brett's really just been permitting away, Hunsinger Farms, Old Springs, section two, their secondary plot is in its review stage, we're waiting on our engineer and, and the developer to work on some stormwater issues we found in the secondary plot, so they are hashing that out and then we will go ahead and accept that secondary plot and report it, but I'm not sure how long it'll take them to hash it out, that is all I have, any questions?
Yeah. So, first, I'd like to announce that we have a new employee, Erin Oster, she was working at the park, part-time, and she's come over to the street department, she's doing a really good job, and she survived her first snowstorm as a rookie plow driver. We received a grant to improve the McCarty drain, and that is, things are starting to happen on that, we've been in contact, you know, it's a legal drain, it's owned by the county, and we're starting to coordinate on how we're going to do it, and also Banning Engineering has started the survey. You'll see some flags out there along sixty-seven, around the M-Vets, and then there Formatory Road and Pendleton Avenue. Hannah mentioned the new website is up and running, we've gotten a lot of good feedback on it, I think everybody's happy. And then Denise and some others attended an award where we received the Indiana Arborist Association Gold Leaf Award, so it was the only award for the state, it's not like they give out twenty of them a year, we were it. So, that was for the project where we planted the two hundred trees around town and hundred trees in the park. So, that was very successful, the guys did a really good, that everybody did a really good job with the snow. Got to even give hats off to Tracy, she was the only one that was able to make it in all the days that the snow was coming down, and she held the Ford up, and then eventually Jenny came in, when she could make it in, but they did a really good job, there were five rookie plow drivers, right? So we had, we had a whole crew out there, and I was number five. I've been the worst, yes. Yeah, there's even a picture that I was going to show you, but apparently it's froze up, anyway. So, hats off to the guys and also water department, a couple, they both have turned into, they were all hands, we've had some bad water main breaks in some of the coldest temperatures, the temperature swings are not good for water mains, having fifty degrees and then zero degrees within forty-eight hours, not good. So, I had some pictures of that too, the water department, they were out two nights in a row, passed all night till early morning, down to single-digit temperatures, so hats off to everybody that really pulling through. I appreciate it. Any questions with that? Did you want me to do that? Okay. The other thing that I think that has been very successful is, you can come up, you want to, thank you, the other thing that I think has been really successful for this Christmas, the, the new wreaths that we've put up, the guys from electric department put up on the poles, but Joni is also the one who decorated our window, I know a lot of people make special trips into town, which is good for our businesses, just to see it, I know, I know my, my kids did, they wanted to come down and see it more than once, so Joni for doing that and making the town look so nice, want to present you with this certificate of appreciation. And of course, if you would like to say something.
Well, it's kind of funny because I wanted to come tonight to kind of call you for giving me a privilege. My daughter's not old, but it's like three years of birth surgery coming three years old, and normally I would do it at home and have a big old one with a lot of people here, and, but then my house always, our home always gets invaded by about forty people or fifty people coming to see it, like, it looks flattering. So I really feel, and I love the little kids. Yeah, on the window, yeah, I really, really.
We make it efficient. Yeah. We have the lights on all the time.
My friend is sometimes, he's very optimistic, and I wish, I have one complaint, it's not real, I wish we had more lights, so it would focus down, yeah. I do have, I do have these, you're better to build it.
That window's empty, you're more than one. It's gonna be a lot.
Doing just the carnival for June, January and for the big time. I'll tell you, we got, we got more.
This is not your house.
And I want to thank all of the folks, for Denise, Denise is the first person I asked, so, thank you very much.
Okay, let's go right down to new business. Member and executive say, we can all go January six twenty-two.
We already did that, that's what I thought earlier, I added it online.
Okay, okay, so that's already given, yeah, okay. Okay, resolution R twenty-two oh one for standard allowance for the expenditure, expenditure of a RPA burden. This is part of the nine hundred eighty-six thousand eight hundred fifty dollars that the town has received, we received that in two installments, we received our first one back when, before the first year, four hundred ninety-three dollars. Four hundred and twenty-five dollars. And this first group, we have to have projects that we are planning on or already done by March third approach. So, we've already done the body cams and car cams for the police department last month, and a generator that we put in at the maintenance barn, and the reason why for the generator, where we had tornado, we had a heck of a time getting the big huge doors out, so we, we decided to do that. In, in this group here that we're doing, we're looking at security cameras, now when I say that, let me, let me go through those things, for the water treatment plants, both plants are five wells, the town hall and the maintenance barn, and then security cameras on the estimate, should say estimate quote, was nineteen thousand three hundred forty-five dollars. And then, at the water plant, at the new water plant, we'll be putting, at the five wells, we'll be putting security fences up around all that with the cameras and everything, so we're secure, okay? The fences, for the one water plant, because the other's already enclosed, and the five wells is ninety thousand three hundred dollars on the appropriate, that sounds like a lot of money, until I looked at the quote with Scott, and there's a lot of fence, you know, the right post in concrete, barbed wire on the top, I mean, it's, it's secure, and that's, that's what we wanted. Another one is the town hall security upgrade, and that's basically for this room and that room there that helped with Scott the.
Yeah, so, so they'll, they'll have, if anybody comes in and is aggressive and hostile, they'll have, there's going to be a more of a wall and then a bank colored window, and then we're going to put up a wall along here, and then we're going to move this bench over this way a little bit and turn this so the opening is, is to the side.
Oh, oh, listen, he's talking about his, we had, I shouldn't say we, they had, can't remember the guy, he's a.
The sheriff for the state Supreme Court came through to do a security evaluation in conjunction with the town court, and these are suggestions that came out of that evaluation.
But it isn't just something that we thought, well, yeah.
And the cameras were part of that.
Yeah. Okay, that's twenty-four thousand four hundred thirty-six dollars. Last one tonight is storm drains on Franklin Street, that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now Franklin Street's where we've been doing all the work down there, and it's ninety-nine percent complete, but we can use the money to put in there to help our stormwater department in the long run, because we get down there, we got another project, that's why Scott's got it set up. So, the total tonight is two hundred and eighty-four thousand and eighty-one dollars. Yeah, that's four of a million dollars, a lot of money, we, we still have a balance that we need to allocate of almost sixty-nine thousand dollars. And the way it works for Pendleton, if, and they changed these rules on the ARP quite a bit, the government asked. They were real explicit what we could use the money on, start now, they backed off a little bit, they changed the dates when you had to have it done, now they've come back out, Jeff, you speak up if I'm out of line here, Jeff is. Now they've come back out. Jeff, you speak up if I'm out of line here. Jeff is sick and he's online with us.
But you're, you're right so far.
Hang on. That's received less than ten million dollars. They've really laxed up how we have to report. We still gotta report all the money, but what we could spend it all. And I'll say it this way, the council has been real good about, here's what I think we ought to do. And here's what I think we ought to do. We're, we're trying to do the right things. I wanted to start out with the security and body cams, basically from P D. Everybody agreed, we voted on that last month. So any questions for, from the council on any of this?
And Chip, what this resolution in front of the council says? What it says is that we are electing, you have to make a certain election by resolution for the more, for the less restrictive use of the funds. The, the ghost stories and the stories of terror that we were getting from the state and the federal government. Had one town that I'm aware of ready to send the money back. That they were so worried they would spend it improperly because of all the hoops they'd have to jump through. But I, I think that got through to folks and so now this is very, the use of this money, if you adopt this resolution is very similar to the, the COVID funds that you received. The last couple of years. So really about any governmental purpose now, if you adopt this resolution, the money can be spent for. Only exception are things like funding the pensions, paying settlements, funding rainy day funds, things of that nature. But just about anything else you could think of that's a proper function of town government, you could spend it using the E R P funds if you adopt this resolution.
Thank you. I, I gotta be honest, my hearing aids are broke. I can hear dang old words. And most other people, if I can look at you, I can understand. I'm sorry. I'll get them fixed tomorrow morning at the V A. Any other questions? Comments? Council, Bob, I think you start saying something.
I think it's a good question, guys. I like what you roll out as far as recommendations on the security cameras. You'd say that you have to have these kind of features for your defense. Where we are in the stage of the world right now, so I think it's been good.
Thanks for the announcement. Unfortunately.
They have security cameras and the fences out there at the new water plant and our wells. I've talked about for those two years, but it takes money. We didn't have it. That's what it boiled down to.
I have a comment, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Is it typical to fence and wells?
So best practices. Because there's been incidences around the country, there's been incidents around the country. And so best practices now are to at least, at least have events and at least have cameras. Because you don't want the wells.
Fair enough. Yeah, makes sense.
Tampered with, thank you. I don't wanna give away.
Wonder if, with any of this extra money, would there be any trails or sidewalks or impertinence that we could make with this town?
Good question, Scott, because that, that's one thing, and I'll, I'll pat everyone on the back on this with our storm water. The way it's set up. When we tear the sidewalks up, we'll replace the sidewalks like you wouldn't believe, which is a good thing. Put the wider ones in and the ramps, so it works that way. That's part of the storm water money. That's one reason why we thought we'd put some of this money into the storm water. That's one of the main things that the government talked about was storm water and your, all your drain, street drains to your storm water. Make sure they're working. So, yeah, I mean, what you're saying, there's sidewalks, we need sidewalks in certain part of town. I wish I could say we had a million dollars to put in it, but I think we're gonna have to go with what Scott has been doing with the storm water. Like Water Street is a good example. Now that's turned out and there's no water on Water Street no more, which is great. Sidewalks and so forth. So I hope that answers your question, but.
So what we try to do when we use storm water is if it doesn't do a second or a third improvement also. In other words, if you look at the storm water on Water Street, it's a whole new street. But, but the main intention was to put in the storm water line. As you know, it's terrible. And then put in the new sidewalks. And so those were two things, right? We improved the road and we, and built new sidewalks, which right there are real important because it connects the soccer field and playground. And the sidewalks are in terrible shape. So that's an example of where you use a storm water fee money to go beyond. Just putting pipe in there. So we do have a master plan for some trails that have some outlined. And as there are projects, either in new construction as the town grows. Or some funds that come along, then we'll apply that to that. An example that's, you're gonna see very quickly is if an end dot project that we're co-tailing off of. We're gonna have trails, trails being the wires and the sidewalk along and around the high school. And then along sixty-seven. And then right now, the space between. Pizza Hut and Jimmy's Dairy Bar is a pig and grain, so nothing can be built there. So we're probably gonna bring, that trail will come as a parallels sixty-seven. We're gonna come in to Hayden Way from that. So you will see some construction of new trail in the next two or three years.
That'll give you room to walk from, I'll see you walking. That's good. Yep, that's good. The queen.
There's quite, quite a few trails that are planned, planned out for the business part that eventually connect with the old iron bridge. So I, now most likely will cross at Taylor Street. And then that'll connect the, the aquatic center goes through. That we're beginning to work on, it'll be able to connect the wellness center, aquatic center, cross over all three of them trail. And then you have it to be into the body of the downtown.
Thank you. Okay, this, I'm wondering if there's any more comments or questions?
I was gonna bring up about the, the suggestion that I sent an email out, I had Lucas. Get a pricing on another vehicle. We have a, we have a budget in our budget for a twelfth officer. We don't have a vehicle. So I had him put some numbers together to obtain just one more vehicle until the fleet is over. We are, you know, need to redo the tire fleet. I don't know if everybody had a chance to look at it, but if it's something we can use these art funds for. It'd be something to look at.
Shane's right because Scott and I, Shane was talking on this earlier. Anything that we council area can use legally on the A R P money. That normally would be general fund goods or services. That we won't be spending money out of general fund, because your general fund is, you have certain things you can do with it. And then this is win-win on both sides for the town and taxpayer. So that's what we're looking at on that. It's still a ways off, but we've got plenty of time. Any other comments? I need a motion on resolution R twenty-two dash oh one. The standard allowance for the expenditures of A R P A fund.
I'd like motion to approve resolution R twenty-two dash oh one.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second on resolution R twenty-two oh one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Thank you. Next one is ordinance twenty-two dash oh three, our board ordinance.
So we come to you tonight asking for your approval of some new bond funds for the park to use. For a new playground system at the front of the park. And as well as some trail maintenance and possibly some property acquisition in the future. So with us tonight are Dennis Otten from Bose McKinney and Jim Tree from O W Pro, who's been working on the financial piece of this. So I'll turn it over to Dennis to kind of walk me through the ordinance and then Jim will walk me through the financing.
Are there?
Thanks, Aaron. Yeah, can, can everyone hear me? Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's at what Mark. I think I've got it maxed out. Our sound system, computer system, it froze up tonight. So it's having issues with lockout. It's gonna cut off her recording.
Can we take your laptop up close to the council since they're in the most important?
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Uh, we're working on our, it's our, and we can hear you, just hang tight for just a second.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Scott, you guys have normal computer speakers to plug in? Like? It should be just a normal, it should be a normal phone or your old.
Oh, like it, yeah, like an aux, I mean, it's two, two speakers. Yeah, just grab them and we'll try it. Is it possible to disconnect this stuff without shutting off Zoom? And then restart it? That's what you're trying, okay. You're far ahead of me then. Okay. Maybe, yeah, I remember that. Yeah. But it would be nice to have somebody else repeat it.
Technology, great when it works.
Yeah. Noted.
Can we plug this into that? Thanks, Seth. Okay, well, let's wait for Hannah to bring those speakers.
Bring the sub look.
Okay, let's, let's, let's be realistic. We really, this, this is very important. What we're talking about here, and I think everybody needs to hear, especially the financial part and what we're trying to do. And we can't do that. So Jeff, if you will, is he still online?
Yes, I'm here.
It's still better. Yes, yes.
If, if I can, you tell me if I'm wrong. Why don't we just not talk about this tonight? If we're gonna form a.
Which, you know, we could introduce it tonight by title only. And if we get our things, I, I don't know the exact deadline of what, when this ordinance will need to be passed for the, for the debt issuance and, and things like that. But if it's not, I've been told that it's the March meeting, but we can introduce it tonight, then we could run through the thing at our, at our March meeting. We could go ahead and get introduced tonight.
You want me to have, give me his number and I'll call him.
Okay, everybody hear that? That's what we're gonna do. Aaron, that's, that's what we'll do.
Yeah.
As long as we get it introduced tonight and then the second reading can be in March, like it was gonna be. And then if it's passed then, then it's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Aaron.
Is it possible for these gentlemen to become a person that speak to us? Question, answer stuff.
I know Dennis is out of town right now, so that's why he's on Zoom and Kim is not comfortable in public.
What's your, what's your next meeting, Aaron?
March, March tenth.
It'll be March tenth, Jim.
Okay. Oh, well, you can hear me.
Some of us can.
Yeah.
Okay.
Speakers system.
Got it.
Okay. We're done. Opened it up and keep still talking to them. And talk about it. It's open and we're gonna stop at this point. Any questions? I'm wondering if I understand what we're trying to do. Wherever older people speak up.
Hey, Jeff, can you hear me?
Yes.
So if it's, do we need to, do we need to have a reading of it tonight with the book?
We can introduce it by title only. Just check, read, we're gonna enter, introduce ordinance twenty-two oh three with the, the title. And that would get us, that checks that box and then we wouldn't need unanimous consent and all that fun stuff at the next meeting.
It needs to be introduced, this is Bill Davidson, it needs to be introduced tonight. They need to, and they need to vote on that tonight, the introduction or just needs to be introduced.
It could just be introduced. That would be enough.
Okay.
Like, they could vote on it, that, that's fine, or introduction itself would be fine.
So then. Suspend the rules and do this. Okay. So basically, we're gonna do, so everybody's clear, we're gonna do fast forward in March, but we're just gonna pause for right now on this.
We're not pausing, we're just.
But we're not gonna go any further. Aaron and I are not gonna. Become bond counsel like right here on the spot. Okay.
We're just introducing ordinance twenty-two dash zero three tonight.
Yeah.
The bond issue for the park. And is there, is there anything else we need to do tonight?
I think, I think that's good. That gets us, we, we've got it introduced and now it can be passed at our next meeting or. It, it, what is the deadline on this? What, is it mid-March?
Yes. Yes. March tenth is fine.
March tenth? Okay, great. Okay.
That'll keep our timeframe going.
Awesome.
Okay. So we'll have to be read a second time.
We can suspend the rules and read it the second time at that.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else, open council, you've got anything else you wanna bring up? Anybody got anything they wanna bring up? Okay. If you will, come up please.
Are you guys going to raise up the drawing between the main drag where you guys repaint it?
Yeah.
So it doesn't go.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that, that is.
You're gonna do it this summer?
Right.
Okay.
Soon as it's warming up. The other thing that's driving me nuts is they didn't get the temporary scribing up.
Yes.
So there's two yellow lines and it makes everybody feel squealed over. So there's two yellow lines and it makes everybody feel squeezed over.
Especially when this park is on the side.
They they parked there or they maybe they paved them really the last day they really could. And to pull it up, it has to be a high enough temperature for it to come up in the fall. That's driving me to particularly the the research for the sand holes. Yeah, no, it just wait till you have a file on that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So five people, I parked our car in two different vehicles. Because I bring a PM to preschool, he's there three hours. I live, round trip is twenty-two miles to our house for the last farm in the camp. Across the street Hancock, there's size Henry. So I just park and there for a long time. And then at three o'clock, I have two more kids to pick up, take home. So it's just saves me money to park at park and read a book or walk my dog. I've kept a record, and I did bring it to my, I've kept a record of all the kids I've almost seen hit. And I almost, what started was I almost hit a child that zoomed out between the cars. And I was probably going ten to fifteen miles an hour and I could stop. If I'd been going twenty miles an hour, I would not have been able to stop. Several parents have come to me because they know I parked there and they walked their dogs and they don't know me, they always talk to me. And ask me, why don't you start a petition, get the speed limit lower down to fifteen at least? Wonderful, it'd be ten, but nobody'd go through there at ten. The other day I saw FedEx coming through and I just, I used my phone as a stopwatch and it only took him like approximately four seconds to get from one area of the park to make it out to return. You had to have been one thirty-five, or forty. So it just worries me because last year I almost saw a whole flock of ducks get wiped out by an old couple taking the corner and looking at the falls and not looking up and almost hit a whole flock of ducks. But they were going pretty fast.
Kind of true.
Well, I've already talked to the chief about it. We already, I already went to the chief and. So I said, I said, okay, I'll take it and ask them.
Let me look at some way, I'm glad you brought that up. Let me look at some ways that we can slow the traffic down.
Yeah, it's really, it's, I blame the parents for not watching the kids.
Yeah.
But I also blame the drivers for going too fast. I'm I'm lucky I didn't hit that kid, I do not want to see a child get hit there.
Well, let we'll look at some things, I think it's, there has been some thoughts that we need to do some things to help with that.
I I've heard everything from shutting the park down with those people, I said, I don't.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you, man, Joe.